Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is approval not required, A and R 36 Corderville Road, Southborough Golf Course, Public Safety Complex. I'll ask the Town Planner to give us the update on this and our action tonight. Karina?
Okay, on April 10th, 2018, the Planning Department received an A and R application from Town Council's office regarding 36 Corderville Road, which is the Public Safety Complex and the Southborough Golf Course. The A and R plan is shown on the screen. To the left, you'll see a smaller parcel. That's the Public Safety Complex parcel, and the larger parcel to the right will remain as the Golf Course parcel. So, the new lot with the Public Safety Complex will be 32 Corderville Road, and the Golf Course will stay 36 Corderville. So, this application was filed with the Town Clerk on April 12th, and we have, according to state statute, we have until May 3rd, 2018, to take action. This was submitted by Town Council. Feldman surveyors prepared the plan, provided the PDF. So, Town Council isn't here with us this evening, but we can hopefully answer any questions you have.
Very good. Now, one of the reasons that, actually, back at the town meeting where this Public Safety Complex and Golf Course plan program was discussed and voted, there were commitments made to, I think one of them was the conservation restriction. Another one was to have this approval-not-required plan created, although I think Town Council said it was not necessary, but it really is the proper tool to separate the two lots and make the conservation restriction on the Golf Course easy to define with these meets and bounds. So, it's my thinking that the commitments that were made back at that town meeting are all, you know, coming true, that this is another step that was promised, and here it is. Mr. Jenks?
It appears that both lots have the required frontage, which is basically the thing that the Planning Board looks at. So, I will move that we approve the A and R for 36 Corderville Road in Southborough.
Second for discussion. All set. Mr. Jenks? Mr. Stein? Motion's been made in second, and you want it to discuss?
Yeah, so, on page two, Karina, of the plan, there's, in the legend, it doesn't indicate what the dotted line is for around envelopes C?
I'm sorry for the confusion. That's not a page two.
Okay.
There's only one plan for the A and R.
Okay.
The second plan is the draft conservation restriction plan, which I can put up on the screen. That was there just for reference, to let the Planning Board members know and the public, because it's posted on the website, that the draft conservation restriction is being worked on.
I support the motion. Mrs. Latrell?
All set.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero to zero. So, we'll sign that before we go home?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, Kane's Crossing. It's a discussion item, request for extension, major site plan approval. Mr. Bartolini, good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Bartolini Jr., Bartolini Builders, and Kane's Crossing, what we're looking for is an extension on the plans that were approved for elderly housing. And what we'd like is a one-year extension. We believe we had good cause. We've had a couple of tragedies in our family. My brother lost his wife, and then just recently, my wife lost her sister. And then the weather has been bad, and we just have not been able to get this thing off the ground. We're about six weeks, maybe eight weeks, behind schedule. So, I'm just asking for some relief. We're very close to the start date and the ending of the time period running out. So, it'd make me more comfortable if we had an extension.
I drove by there today. I see that you've started.
Well, we've cleared the trees. We put up the hay bales, or the silt fence and stabilizer for the lot, but we haven't moved any dirt or done any excavation as of yet.
Mr. Jenks?
Good evening. You said you were how far away from starting, or?
Well, I plan, actually, I brought a letter of when we plan to start, and it states that my anticipation is June 15th. And in my mind, there was some, our capable Town Planner has explained this to me, but I believe we run out on June 26th.
26th, yes.
So, it's very close to the time.
What had been your planned start time?
My planned start time had been that I was going to start this in the fall of last year, but again, winter came a little earlier and lasted a little longer. Today, it feels like much more than the end of April.
So, you're, it sounds like you're half a year, maybe a little more than that, behind schedule?
Just about, yeah.
And why the full year extension?
I mean, if you want to give me six months, that's fine. It's just cleaner if it's a year. It's just usually what it's done, and it just...
You anticipate starting and...
I don't anticipate being here next year, if that's where you go.
But you anticipate starting and working continuously?
Right.
You're not looking at jumping off this for another?
No, actually, one of the things that's been a problem for us is that we were going to pave Leeds Way, the other project that you approved, in September, and we ran into a problem with conservation, which held us up until January of this year. So, we paved that just last Thursday. So, I want to stabilize that site before I go do this site. So, there's a bunch of logistics that go with this.
I have no questions further.
Mr. Stein? I don't have any questions. Mrs. Latrell?
Was the condo association language that allowed, for the allowed activities for the undeveloped field, has that been reviewed and approved by the Town Council?
It's been done. Everything has been done.
Okay. That's all I...
Done, and I believe it's been recorded, too.
Okay, thank you.
We'll open it up to the public. Any questions or comments? Kane's Crossing, one-year extension. George, no?
Pardon me?
Nothing. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the requested extension for a one-year period for Kane's Crossing at Lincoln Square.
Second for discussion. Motion's been made in second, and Mr. Stein?
So, you had asked about six months. Is there any particular reason why you want to extend the full year, or?
I had asked about what the period of delay was, not specifically six months, and wanted to clarify that the work would be continuous once it started, and that they were not planning on getting a start and then jumping off for another project.
Okay, thank you.
I'm satisfied that's the case.
Okay, motion's been made in second. I see someone has come in. This is Kane's Crossing, sir? No? Okay. All in favor? Four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Jack. That had to do with a picture of the Bartolini family in the St. John's Magazine recently. Full transparency. Next item on the agenda is 16 Main Street, zoning district change from Resident B to Business Village. Ask the Town Planner to update us on this item.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jenks?
I don't know if I'm within the 300-foot boundary, which would make me in a butter, but it's certainly pretty close. If I'm not, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. Karina?
Hi. Hi, John. This is regarding 16 Main Street. It's a property that's located, let me just bring it up here on the screen. With us this evening is John Nichols. Are you actually the owner, or is your father the owner?
My father's the trustee of the trust. I'm one of the beneficiaries.
Okay. So, Mr. Nichols is one of the beneficiaries. The property that we're talking about is the one with the little raindrop upside down, 16 Main Street, which is just south of the word Main Street. See, there's 14 Main Street. Currently, 16 Main Street is in the Residential B zoning district, and Mr. Nichols is looking to find out not only how to go about it, but a feel from the Planning Board as to their take on perhaps extending the Business Village District to include his lot, 16 Main Street. If you're not sure where that is, north of that where it says the word Southborough, that's a small strip plaza with a Santander Bank in there.
Correct, yep.
And we also have some photos, so I can just show you quickly. This is the property, 16 Main Street, looking at it from the front. Is that from the side, or is that the neighbor?
Yes.
That's from the side. This is across the street, if you were looking out of the house. You see the strip mall, looking down Main Street. This is the property to one side.
That's the one next door, yep.
Yep. And then, this is the property on the other side.
Correct.
Okay. So, you get a general idea, and I'll take you back to the property. And there's the subject property. So, just to reiterate, John Nichols is here to get a, just to explain a little bit why he wants to do this, and then also get a feel from the board if this is something that would be likable, or he should, you know, it's feasible to pursue. So, the next step would be for him to formally request a bylaw, a zoning map change through the Board of Selectment, which would then trigger the process for Planning Board public hearing, and then on to the annual town meeting for the town to vote.
Right.
Did you want to say anything, Mr. Nichols? Go ahead.
Sure. I, just in looking around at the property, my family's owned this property for a little over a quarter century. It's currently a three-family home, which there is no zoning in town, to my knowledge, where that's actually an allowable use. So, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming. The, when you look across the street and to the side, you've got the business entities. There is a residential on the other side, as you saw on the map and on the photos. In sort of looking at what potentially we'd like to do with the property, I don't have any immediate plans of any nature, but I'm just sort of thinking that it would probably be more, certainly more advantageous for me to be able to look at the possibilities of pursuing, you know, different types of uses, if I was going to do some renovation, et cetera. I'd like to have, you know, the opportunity to look at what might fall within sort of the other uses, whether it be, I don't know, I really don't know. I have no, again, no immediate plans, but it could be attorney's office. It could be a small retail shop, gift shop. Don't really know, but I just think it sort of, and in regards to the requirements from, dimensionally, it would be much more suited to that zone than what it currently is. So, it would be, it would be more conforming, if you will. The lot actually would be a conforming lot. The use wouldn't be, but it would become a conforming lot.
Very good. I'll open it up to the board and then to the public. Mr. Stein?
Sir, you're seeking like a mixed use?
I just want to pull the, so if you look at that zoning map, it actually comes across the street and goes around the property next door to me. And I just was looking...
Right now, it's residential, right?
My property is, correct, right. I'm not looking for a change of use or anything. I'm just looking to change the zone that it falls in, right.
So, but from a zoning perspective, you want to be able to convert it to a mixed use?
Not necessarily, whatever is allowed in the zone. I'm not, again, I don't have any immediate plans, but I believe in that zone, it does allow for things of that nature. But I actually haven't really gone down that path, because again, I don't have a tenant or a use to do that. I just know that that would certainly afford more than what we currently have.
Yeah. I mean, I haven't, I haven't done a zoning map change before, but I would imagine, as a planner, since you're here for some feedback, that a little bit more information on what the thought process is, what the possible uses would be, how it's going to benefit the town, are things that you'd want to, you know, have in mind when you're getting ready for a submission. I mean, I understand that having the flexibility would be great, but we need a little bit more info on what's in it for the town and what's going to be there.
Let me ask you this. Is there a way to get some feedback from the town, what maybe the town might want there? Because I'm really looking at it as a blank slate, is, you know, that's where I'm at.
Yeah. Well, if you're asking me, it's, you know, the affordable housing component is a big consideration. I'm the Chair of the Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, and, you know, that's something that would be very interesting, because we could, we can always use more units to get to our 10% goal as a town for affordable housing.
Okay.
So, you know, like, the Planning Board historically has been open to flexible permitting when there was an affordable unit discussion as part of that. So, that's my feedback, but, you know, the rest of the board will have their own comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Latrell?
Does a zoning change require two-thirds at town meeting?
Yes.
Have you spoken to any of the neighbors?
I haven't, no.
I'd be interested in hearing what they have to say. I have no other question.
One question also is what the age of the property is. Is it a historical home?
I think it was built in the early 1800s, like 1810 or something like that, as to my recollection. It's old.
So, there may be application for the adaptive reuse of historic buildings, bylaw that we discussed as well?
If I'm not mistaken, I don't believe that requires a zoning change. The historical, that adaptive reuse is, I believe, available in any of our zones, so...
Right.
I thought when you and I looked at that, though, it had a lot to do with owner occupancy. I mean, I don't live in this building.
If it's residential. So, if it's, right. So, if it's residential, you get some leeway on the residential types of requirements for owner occupancy and square footage, the 25% versus 35%, two employees versus three, or something like that.
I don't remember all the details. I know we did go over...
But there are areas you could take advantage of that, if you opted to take that route, which would buy you a little more space for whatever is allowed under that bylaw.
Mm-hmm, okay. You asked about getting feedback. You're going to get some in a few minutes, if there's anyone here that wants to speak to that. But we had a major zoning change when what is now the EMC Dell property on the other side of Route 9. And of course, there's a public hearing, and it doesn't have to be one night. It can be multiple nights, as it was with that. And they got plenty of feedback from the neighbors and the town on that, and promises were made, or commitments, and then, once the town voted to support the rezoning, a lot of that's, a lot of that Dell EMC promises went out the window. So, there is a history of getting your way and then changing your mind later. So, I think there'll be probably some people that will make sure that you stay within the rules. Now, the Business Village District is probably the most, it has great flexibility, but it also has the greatest protection that the neighbors could have in any district. The, it's a special permit to do something in a Business Village District, and the, I guess the bar for attaining that special permit is pretty high. The board has great flexibility and authority in not granting a special permit if the board and the neighbors feel that it's not a good fit for the neighborhood, regardless of the district. So, I guess I'll open it up to the public. If anyone wants to speak, please go to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Yes, Michelle Hokinson, 10 and 12 Main Street. We are actually in a butter in the back, 12 Main Street. I have two concerns about this. My first concern is, A, that it is a historic... My first concern is, A, that it is a historic building, and B is currently, we've lived there for twenty-five years, and it's always been an issue that the tenants currently park on the sidewalk. I mean, they don't use your driveway, and my concern is, if this becomes a business, what do you plan on doing for parking?
You know, at this point, I, I truly couldn't tell you, this is so exploratory at this point. The, there is parking beside the house, and, on both sides of the house, and I know that tenants do use those parking areas, but they do also oftentimes all drive by and see someone might park out front, but, um-
Picture tonight.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, I know people park in front of the house. But again, there is parking on the side, both sides of the house. But I, I, I mean, I would certainly think that if there was going to be some sort of a revamp to the property, I, I can only imagine parking would be, you know, like, like you just mentioned. You know, obviously, all those things would need to be, um, dealt with at that time. Again, I don't have any actual specific plan here, you know. I sort of thought that potentially it would make more sense to, um, bring it into the zone that, that is on, you know, two of its sides, and, and then sort of, you know, um, I may do nothing with it. As a matter of fact, I, I own a property in Holliston that's very similar. It was exactly the same, except that I was actually in between two properties. So it would be like, i-if the other one was also Business Village, and I, um, I, I did the same thing. I asked the town to incorporate me into that, and they did, and I, I've never changed a thing. I just, um, again, thought it made more sense to kind of pull it into, that was two or three, four years ago. I forget how long ago. But, you know, maybe, uh, when I decide to sell, you know, you get somebody that comes along that might, you know, and then you explore those options at that point. Again, there's no immediate plan.
Tim Lit, Woodland Road. I have no particular stake in this, but it occurs to me you were asking about feedback. Given where it is, you might want to talk with the Economic Development Committee, because, you know, they're looking at Main Street and, you know, what other uses there might be, so. Place to connect.
I am Marston Cloud, I'm in a butter on the other side, the white house that was shown. I've been there for forty-two years, and my view is, I can see your point of view that it's advantageous to you, but from my point of view, this is essentially a residential neighborhood, starting from on the other side of Latos Guam, up as far as Route eighty-five, with the exception of the property shown that's been, um, a business property for, for many years. So, my first objection is, my first, yeah, it's, it's an objection, is that this is essentially spot, spot zoning. What's good for this gentleman may not be good for the rest of the neighborhood, depending on what, we don't know what goes there. So, it's a huge change for what has historically been a residential neighborhood. When I, when I bought it, your property was owned by an elderly lady. She lived there alone, she had one elderly tenant, and it became, from that point, um, a two-family, then a three-family house. My other view is, it's essentially spot zoning on our side of the street. A zone should be a zone. So if we're going to talk about a zone, talk about not just one property, but talk about, as this gentleman said, talk about a whole area, so. I didn't read, thank you.
The only thing I'd respond to that would be is that I, I really wouldn't personally mind if his property was also moved into the zone. I don't know that he has any interest in that, but I, I see it as spot zoned next door to me. That, to me, that's the thing that seems odd, is that it comes across the street. If that property, number fourteen, was on some sort of a special permit or a variance or something, it, that may be a little bit different. But the fact that it comes across the street and around that house, or home or property, to me, the whole area is sort of, like I said, I look out the door and that's what I see on both sides of me, but.
Yes, Ray?
Ray Hokinson, ten Main Street. This is, I got here as fast as I could, so I didn't hear the details before. So I'll assume that this is mostly just a discussion or a request at this point. I'm Ray Hokinson, ten Main Street, and I've lived there for twenty-five years. I'm also the owner of twelve Main Street, currently a rental property, but I'm fixing it up, improving it, and trying to keep the neighborhood a residential historic area. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors, the Southborough Community House, which is at the end of the corner. I got a couple points, I'll try, I got a lot that I wrote, but I'll try to keep it brief and to the point.
You don't have to keep it brief.
Okay, good, oh, thank you. I think some people see Main Street, when they see the Village Center, as a road to and from destinations, and as a location of the pizza parlor, the cafe, the market, and barber shop, et cetera. But I think the Village Center is also a neighborhood. It's a place where we've raised our families, and we work with the other neighbors to improve the neighborhood. It's very much a neighborhood. It's a combined business and residential neighborhood, but it is, in fact, a neighborhood. Neighborhood that I consider the village is Main Street, School Street, Latos Guam, Middle Road, and on up, East Main Street, the other side of the railroad tracks. It's not a transient neighborhood by any means. Most of my neighbors have been there for years, and new families that have moved in to replace the older families seem intended to stay. And even many of the tenants that I know of, I don't know many, I, I know two, two groups of tenants of sixteen Main Street, they've been there for years, almost as long as I have. So it's actually been quite an established, stable rental property. The history, it sort of alludes to this question. The last point. The businesses are there because businesses were there when town zoning started. Sometime in the seventies, I think, is when town zoning started. I'm not, that's kind of-
Nineteen fifty-five.
Nineteen fifty-five, so the answer is still true. The businesses that are there were the businesses that were there when town zoning started. The business at fourteen Main Street was subdivided originally from the extended version of ten Main Street. So ten Main Street, twelve Main Street, and fourteen Main Street were subdivided in nineteen hundred. Ten and twelve are residences, and fourteen was the general store that was built around nineteen hundred, or approximately then. Eleven Main Street, the other business, was the replacement for the Southborough Arms. So it was a hotel up until the seventies, when the Southborough Arms burned down. So these, it is very much a spot issue, but it was a spot issue to deal with businesses that were already there and businesses that had been there for hundreds of years. Not hundreds of years, a hundred years at least. Main Street itself, from eight Main Street, straight on up the rest of, of, of the way, eight, ten, twelve, sixteen, not, not, yeah, sixteen, and, and straight on all, they're all residences. So we consider Main Street really a residential Main Street. At one time, historically, eleven Main Street, the, um, the plaza, it's kind of an eyesore, to be honest with you. We all wish that we had the historic Southborough Arms back. But they tried to expand, and they tried to expand onto fifteen Main Street, because at the time, that business was Harvard, Harvard Health. And the neighbors at that time, which was, I think, the mid-eighties, fought that expansion, because they wanted to push into fifteen Main Street on the other side. That was protected. Fifteen Main Street remained a, um, a residence, in a residential zone. And the business that was trying to grow and, and outgrow itself actually wound up around the corner on Newton Street, and it has a much better location, and it works for them. And the smaller, little eleven Main Street works for the community. Also, the Historic Commission has efforts underway to create a National Register Historic District for this. This whole area has been mapped out significantly. Many of the historic homeowners in the area have bought and posted their historic signs, trying to point out where they came from. You'll see them, there are ones on my house, there's ones elsewhere on Main Street, and there are many on Latos Guam as well. Sixteen Main Street is, again, a historic, uh, historic house, and it's listed. If you haven't looked at it, I can give you a description of what's there on Main Street. I took it off of the current plan by the Historic Commission as to what these houses are. Sixteen Main Street, nineteen- eighteen-ten, it was built in the federal style, Harriet Parker Charles Parker House. And I even have actually an old picture somewhere of sixteen Main Street, kind of from in front of my house, ten Main Street, before the, um, before the, uh, general store was built. So there's, that lot is, is vacant. ZAC, my favorite committee, the Zoning Advisory Committee, in, in one of their, their big peeves was an effort for the need in the village to have affordable housing in the, in the Village Center. And this is perhaps a, a classic case of the most affordable housing. It's a rental property in this, in the Village Center. And to assume that we would take away, after such an effort, to try to encourage affordable housing in the village, to turn around and say, okay, no, we would, would rather have it be a business, is, is, in my opinion, a little bit contrary to efforts by the Zoning Advisory Committee, the Zoning Board, and a whole bunch of other community efforts. I will try to be polite, to a degree, but up and down Main Street, a lot of people take care of their properties. Sixteen Main Street, as a rule, is a bit of an eyesore, and has been an eyesore for a while. It's marginally maintained exterior, kind of the worst in three blocks. Its parking lot, that's supposed to be for the residents, is seldom used. Tenants park on the sidewalk, which has always been an issue, often on the front lawn. And it's really sort of an outlier for the rest of the residences. And I guess the question I would ask with that is, would we, as a town, sort of reward a, a property owner for being sort of a, an absentee tenant and a marginal tenant, and then reward him with his request to say, oh, I can make more money and flip it to a business? I have concerns for that. So I don't think it's, I think this Main Street and that stretch of Main Street is a residential district, and that the two businesses that are there are really sort of historical cases that were businesses long before zoning started. I'll make my notes, you said it was the fifties, done. They were businesses before then, and residences, residents who live here, and like I said, it's very much a neighborhood, the whole, it's a neighborhood, community, and it's very, very residential, and we want to keep it a residential issue. I would ask one question to the board, uh, to the Planning Board. A change of any zoning would have to go to town meeting, am I correct? For a two-thirds vote?
Yes, we covered that before you got here.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that, I just wanted to make sure that I was correct. And the only thing I would say, unless there was some sort of killer, true killer, plan for this, like, whoa, that's fantastic idea, you know, the whole town would rave for it. I think the neighborhood would resist it. We don't have that many people, I've contacted a few, we got a couple more, okay, I'm seeing more. I think the neighborhood would seriously resist it. We are concerned about slippery slopes. And, you know, I'm, you know, to be honest with you, sometimes, as a, as a person on the corner there, I'm tempted to say, oh, yeah, let's just pave over my lot and, and make it a McDonald's.
It wouldn't be allowed to have a drive-up.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, I got, basically, I could pave over an acre and a half sitting there at the corner. Uh, and I hope that Phil is cringing, but, 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 but I wouldn't do it. Now, I'd love to stick my thumb in the eye of Southborough, sometimes, but I wouldn't do it for the neighbors. I wouldn't do it because it is a neighborhood, and I respect the neighborhood, and I respect the people who live there. And I do see it as very much a residential area. And I think that's what I plan to say.
Very good, anyone else? So, sometimes, uh, a proposed change in zoning comes with a, a specific plan, and other times, it comes with no plan, and just the, uh, the understanding that if the zone gets changed from what it is to what you want it to be, that the rules within that new zone, which in this case is the Business Village District, the rules would apply to you as the owner, or any future owners, without a plan. And then if you did have a plan and it passed, you wouldn't necessarily be tied to that plan. Case, case that I met, mentioned earlier, which was the, uh, the EMC property, where they had a plan and it never happened. Anybody else? Did you want us? Kate, you have to go to the microphone.
Okay. Even though I've got the most booming voice. Hi, I'm Kate Madison, eight Davis Road. I'm on the Historical Commission. I'm here to support Ray. I think what he says is very pertinent. And just to, to point out that that building is part of House Right Moses Newton, who built a lot of the nineteenth-century houses in Southborough. And in particular, that, it's, it's a marvelous place. And if we, whatever we do, we should respect the building. Thank you.
If there's no, no one else, nothing else, sir? Did you want, Mr. Nichols, did you want us? You, you're welcome to get on our future agendas as another discussion item, if you, if there's some, something new that you want to, um, bring forward. Otherwise, just continue to work through the town planner, or if you want to move forward, and she'll, she'll help guide you through the process.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Mr. Stein?
Yeah, so I've mentioned Shopsey before, so you could also contact myself and/or Karina to get on a Shopsey agenda, and we can discuss the affordable housing possibilities and get some ideas from the other Shopsey members, which is a separate committee.
Thank you.
Wouldn't require zoning change, so, a bit easier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is another discussion item, Chestnut Meadows subdivision, covenant and endorsement of plans.
Town plan is going to get out the, uh, the plans. We have two items, George, the covenant and then the plans?
Yes.
Did you want to speak to all of that?
Covenant has been prepared, it's been-
Covenant has been prepared. It's been reviewed by town council. It's been endorsed by the developer. And tonight they have sent a notary to notarize the planning board's signatures on the covenant. We'd like to get that done so she can go home. And then the plans you can endorse at the end of the night, as I guess is your custom. And we'll pick them up tomorrow, if that's acceptable to the board.
Mr. Jenks?
I have no questions at this time, but I missed something that George just said that I want to look for here, and so I'll come back after others.
Mr. Stein?
No questions at this time.
Mrs. Luttrell?
No questions.
George, you have the letter April 18th from the town administrator?
I don't have that with me.
Did you see it?
I don't recall it.
Why don't you take a look? Give you a minute to look at it. I don't think it affects what we're trying to do tonight.
It's your road alteration. It's your approval for road alteration. I included that in the planning board packages, just for their information.
Did you have that, George?
Yes, we have that. We had met with selectmen and gone over that road.
You got the letter?
And, yeah.
Okay, because otherwise you can have mine.
No, I have a copy of it. I really was thinking about the subdivision, not the Chestnut Road.
Okay.
So in my hand, I have the original executed covenant with the modifications that were made in response to town council's review, which requires a vote by the planning board members to accept if they so choose, and then to sign with notaries' witness. And Habitat did send a notary, her name is Sheila, she's over in the corner, to help expedite this so that they could take this with them if that's the way it's voted, to accept it.
Mrs. Luttrell? Comments on signing the covenant?
My only question is, there's some blanks on book and pages. Is it customary to sign before those are filed?
Okay. No, go ahead.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
The books and pages will be determined at the Registry of Deeds when they record the supplemental documents.
Okay.
So we don't know what those will be till we record.
You don't know the book and page, right? Yeah.
Right.
Not the supplemental document. You know, we already know what the documents are.
But those supplemental documents will be recorded.
Yes, and they sign.
And maybe we'll get a book and page.
Right.
So we'll have six or seven book and pages by the time we're done.
So we're missing one of the members tonight. Does that matter?
That's fine. You just need three.
Mel Set, Jesse? Phil? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the covenant as presented this evening and reviewed by town council for the definitive subdivision plan of Chestnut Meadow in Southborough, Mass., as prepared by Connorstone Engineering.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Four to zero. So George, if your notary can come up, we'll just sign that right now.
Thank you. And we can get the plans tomorrow morning signed?
Yep. We understand that they're going to expect it to be picked up at some point.
Thank you. I guess I can leave now.
At your own risk.
We already voted. Can tell you a funny story about that some other time.
Hi, Sheila. George, make sure we sign in the right place. This one's the page three. It's here.
Yeah.
Plus, they were individual for the notary.
Okay. Those are already signed. Yeah. All right, let me sign this. So 30th day. Andrew's not here, so he's not going to be signing that one. So you can have that. Now, this one here is for Phil. And Jesse. And this last one is for Mrs. Luttrell. Do you want the pens, George, historically?
These are both notary clauses.
You have to sign here.
Well, I don't want to sign there. Oh, you don't want me to notarize my own signature, do you?
But you did sign it.
So what did I sign? Was I not supposed to sign that piece? Yeah, my commission expires.
These are the signatures that were notarized.
Well, you signed on that one. You just weren't supposed to sign here.
Right, so you'll still have three. Throw mine out.
I didn't sign that.
Oh, you didn't sign this? Right here, George? Between the last signature and the next typed line.
There's only three numbers, right? Only three numbers to sign each other?
Well, there's four, but mine, because I signed the notary piece, and then forget it. Just go with the three, the other three. So there's the three, actually the four signatures.
The only problem is there'd be a page missing. That would be confusing. There's a page missing. Because this is five, and then it goes to six. So I'm wondering, is there any way to strike that?
Yeah, strike.
And sign above it?
Yeah, strike.
So it's just corrected? Because if you go to record this, they'll say that, you know, there's a missing page.
Or blank.
Would you like me to get white out? Is that all right on the original?
That would be good.
Okay. Well, I'll just put white out if you want.
Good.
Well, what if she put that in the copying machine and put a piece of white over my signature? And then you'd get a copy, fresh copy.
You could have to do the seal as well. If you want. If you want to do that, you can do that and seal this, and then I can...
You can tear that one up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Think we've just shown the public that we don't do these that often?
And that's something up. You can just print it. You have the PDFs online.
Mr. Stein?
I'd like to make a motion for a two-minute recess.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? See you in a couple of minutes. We had signed, in the recess, we had signed the covenant and had the notary witness and seal the signatures. Next item on the, no, we have to, the board is expected to endorse the subdivision plans. Is that correct? And we'll do that at the end of the meeting? Is that okay with the board? Next item on the agenda is 154, 156, 56 Northborough Road, Contractor Bays, discussion. Ask the town planner to give us the update on this one. Yeah, you can go ahead and set up. Oh, yeah. You could turn that about 60 degrees so that people in the audience can see it. The camera will still pick it up. That's good. Is that okay, Terry?
I'm William Hall with Stamsky McNary.
Yeah, hold on a second. I want to get an update from the town planner on this.
Okay, earlier in the year, Mr. Aho and his team approached me regarding a potential project at 154, 156 Northborough Road, which is a relatively thin strip of parcel bordered on one side by Northborough Road and on the other side by the railroad tracks. You may recall, this had been previously permitted in, I believe, 2010 timeframe. And it required variances at that time. Those permits had all lapsed. I believe this is a new entity approaching this property. They are proposing Contractor Bays. They originally came forward with a scenario of two buildings, which requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as a couple of variances. So they did apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they obtained their variances. However, the special permits were continued until such time that the proponent moves the project through Planning Board and Conservation, because there are also some wetlands on one side of that property. So I recommended that they, if they were interested to come before the Planning Board already, while they were working on developing their plans, just to give an introduction to what you're planning to do there. Maybe get a little generic feedback to move forward. And then your goal is to ultimately submit for major site plan approval and lower impact development, a special permit. So, that's it, John.
Okay. Just caution that this is a discussion item on our agenda. It's not a hearing, and because it's discussion, it's kind of open. But just as a caution, it's your project, it's your design. You may get some feedback from the board members, you may not. And whatever feedback you get, it's still your decision. You proceed at your own risk and not necessarily rely on the feedback from the board tonight, because this is the first time we've seen this. And also, there's more details that will, that could change the board member's opinion. You're on.
Good evening. William Hall with Stamsky McNary. To my right is Joe Aho, and at the far end of the... the far end of the table is Mark Bobrowski. Karina did a good job explaining the history of the project. As she said, it's a previously approved site plan back in 2010 or so. We did go to ZBA, get the variance for the yard setbacks, and pushed out the special permit till we go through planning. And we also went to conservation and got an extension for the order of conditions in the stormwater management permit, because those were about to lapse in June, I believe it was. We will need to go before them with an amendment, because we were not the original engineer on the plan, so they are going to be seeing this again. Basically, as Karina had said, we're going with a single building design on this, unless we get input otherwise from the board. We have entrances on either side of each building. They're 22-foot wide entrances. The road is approximately six feet higher than the parking that is located in the back. It changes as you go down Northborough Road, but that's an approximate measurement there. So anything in the rear in the parking area wouldn't be seen from the front unless you're driving past the buildings. If you're standing in front of them, the buildings would be shielding any views from Northborough Road. And as far as drainage goes, I won't bore you with all that right now. We'll save that for later. But it's going to be very similar to what was done previously on the approved plan. With that, I'll have Joel and Mark discuss the potential uses that would be going into the building in a little bit more detail.
Thank you. Mark Bobrowski, for the record, my office is in Concord. This is in the IP district, so looking at the uses that are in your zoning bylaw, the ones that appeal to the proponent the most are the following. First, as of right, would be up to 50,000 square feet. The building is approximately 24,000 square feet. Would be office and storage. It says wholesale distribution and storage within a building. So those two uses are available as of right. The other two uses that are a good mix for that are by special permit, and that would be a private garage and light manufacturing. So what I think is envisioned here is a sort of multipurpose building that people can use for their small businesses. Instead of doing this out of their yard at home, or instead of doing it in an open-air environment, this would provide Contractor Bays for people who make their living. In the morning, they'd have to load the truck. They go off to the job site. They may take in some work here. Light manufacturing looks to me like welding would be allowed, or something, assembly fabrication would be allowed, again by special permit. When you do the math on the parking, just to start with the parking, we have 72 outdoor spaces.
That's correct.
And you obviously have, some of those could be inside spaces as well, if people are going to use them for a garage. So if you were to max this building out at the highest parking ratio, which is office, it would need 67 spaces. Office parking is 3.5 spaces per thousand gross floor area. Gross floor area takes 20% off the building right off the top. So that gets it down to around 19,000 and change. When you do the math on that, now 3.5 times 19,000 gets you up to 67. I think it's 67.2. The light manufacturing is parked at a different ratio. It's one per 300. And it says floor area. It doesn't say gross. So I think your bylaw probably means to say gross, and I'm going to take a 20% deduction for that. And that would mean that it would need 64 spaces if it were all light manufacturing. So whether it's all office or a combination of office and light manufacturing, 72 outdoor parking spaces plus the number of units there that could be the home of a vehicle overnight, you have more than enough parking. I think the other things we looked at are, the office use is an evolving concept. If you look, that's the front of the building from the ground-level view, but if you look behind you, I can't, what do we have for the other board here, where it shows the double elevation, Bill? There's actually two floors of office, four office spaces. So somebody who had a bay where they were doing work could actually have an office space as well. So the front elevation is at ground, is at grade level, but the site...
Need a microphone.
But the site falls off in the back. So you can see, here's the ground level, and then the building falls off in the back, and there's two more offices that are at below grade. So we wanted to get a feel from you as to the mix, and obviously, things that fall into place from here, if this is something that you view favorably, would be details like landscaping and lighting. Snow storage, dumpster locations, things of that sort.
Was that it for your presentation?
Yes.
Open it up to the board. Again, you're asking the type of questions that would be connected to an official site plan, like snow storage and the parking. I'm glad you went over that.
We do think we have enough room for a dumpster location and for snow storage. Maybe Bill can lead you to likely spots for that.
So for dumpster locations, we are thinking in the corners, these unused corners that will be painted, could do one on either side. And then for snow storage, just along the edges of the driveways, so.
Open it up to the board, and then if anyone from the public wants to comment. Mr. Jenks.
Where, how close are you to the Northborough line?
This property, I believe, is one of the last in Southborough, and then it's actually Marlborough that it's next to.
What is the difference between Contractor Bays and self-storage bays?
I think a Contractor Bay would be something that would be frequently, it would certainly be used, visited on a more, much more regular basis. I have two or three mini-storage, self-storage. I think the last time I was in any of them was two years ago. So that's not the idea. Although, storage, if it's, if somebody wants it for storage, storage is an allowed use, so.
So...
I see this as more of an active environment than...
Yeah, I would think it conceivable, though, that a contractor might want to get two bays. One of them might be storage and...
I represent an outfit in Sudbury. Been there since the mid-'50s, and they're still going strong. But they have stone mason, who picks up his stuff in the morning and goes off to his job site, welder. There's trucks stored there. It's a hodgepodge of people who are trying to make ends meet, and it's a nice environment for them to have a place nearby their home so that they can get out in the job in the morning when they need to.
Name doesn't begin with K, does it?
My...
You'd know it if... Okay, your dumpster locations. Are you planning on screening those from the front, Northborough roadside?
Yeah, I believe we'd be planning on screening those.
And I can't tell from that plan, but would the truck have to back in from the driveway in the back of the building to collect the dumpsters?
I believe that they'd be able to pull, if they're oriented properly, then they could pull straight in from either entrance and load them.
That's, if you get into the site plan issue, that's a question that I'd like to see explored a little bit. There, if I remember correctly, there are no residences in the back. There's a railroad track, and the dumpster collections get to be an issue when it's in a residential area or near residential, because they like to do things at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning and allow it. How do you, you said you think that the sides of the driveways will provide enough snow storage? How do you calculate that? How do you know? I mean, you're just looking at it and saying, we'll push the snow here, or are there tables somewhere that say you need so many square feet?
No tables, just estimation on, by looking at it and just seeing where you have areas that they could possibly store snow. There's a lot of steep slopes on the site, so it's a little limited in that capacity.
Do you have a Plan B?
I would think the Plan B is always just either removal or taking up a couple of parking spots that aren't in use.
How many units are there in total?
20 units in total.
Just to speak to that, though, the, right now, we don't have any tenants lined up for the property. So kind of to your point, you know, there could be a contractor, because these units, I believe, are around 1170 or 1173 square feet, which is pretty small units for the market. So, you know, in theory, somebody could come in, and each building, I think, is a, you know, it's got 10 units per building. In theory, somebody could come in and say, we want a whole building. And then, you know, initially, it wouldn't make sense to put up the walls, so you'd have, you know, just one building. But, you know, I think the plan would be to plum in for the 20 units, because, you know, if that tenant leaves, probably at some point, you're going to start cutting it up, even if you didn't do it initially.
Would car parking be allowed in any of these bays? Someone working on cars, rebuilding antique cars, or...
I'd have to look back at the use, uses available in the IP district. Certainly, if somebody had, you know, a wonderful old roadster that wanted to be stored here without necessarily working on it, I think that would fall into storage or private garage. Both uses are allowed. And I think the private garage is more intended to be, it says private garage or parking for more than three cars or more than one truck or other commercial vehicle. And I'm just looking to see if it allows any, I don't see anything about automotive or vehicle repair.
Have you...
No.
Checked out septic system, done any, any testing on the land, or...
Yeah, there was previous testing done for the site plan, and they had an approved septic system. So we'll be redesigning that and resubmitting a septic system.
How long ago was that? How old are those plans?
2010 or '11.
And you've got some screening in there and shrubs and that type of thing. The special permit that you need to get from zoning, is it one or is that two sep, two different?
It's for the private garage and for light manufacturing.
One permit.
It's two different categories.
Two, two separate permits.
Right. And I think the idea would be to not have to keep coming back. So we'd like to get everything, knowing that it'll all fit in the parking schedule. And then, as Joel said, as these tenants come and go, we're already pre-approved.
Sure. Well, that's good.
The other thing is, I'm not sure, I think it's included in one of those special permits, but is multiple uses at a single site is also a special permit? That's part of the, that was part of the ZBA application.
Have you looked at, or are you planning, I gotta look at the roof lines here, any solar panels, or...
Yeah, I spoke with, I spoke with somebody about it, because we were actually thinking about, you know, if we did solar, it probably makes sense to do, you know, a flat, slightly pitched roof. But I don't think it's really big enough to really make it, you know, feasible. So I kind of just scrapped that idea, because originally, what I was thinking was maybe doing solar on the roof and then carports out back. But then it just, it's such a tight site then to be dealing with snow and everything out back there with carports. And I don't know that it really makes a whole lot of sense to just do the solar on the roof and really be, you know, something that makes sense. So I kind of just mentally kind of crossed it off the list.
What is your water supply, domestic water?
So for the water supply, there's an existing main further down Northborough Road to the east, and we'd have to extend that main up to in front of the property.
That a north, a Marlborough main, or is that a Northborough? Whose main, what town?
I'm not sure whose main it is, but we will look into that.
And are you planning on sprinklers in these buildings?
Basically, not if we can help.
Need a microphone.
We don't really know if we're going to be doing sprinklers or not, depending on what the usages are there, but, or if it's required or not. I'm not sure if you guys require over certain size or whatever. So that's, do you know if there's a requirement for the sprinklers in a certain size?
I don't. I suspect it's got to do, or heavily based anyway, on use.
Right.
And if you're, if you've got automobiles in there, I suspect that's one of the uses that...
It probably will.
I think the building inspector could tell you that off the top of his head. I will say, I think it, it looks a lot better than I had anticipated when you first came in with us. But the fact that all the overhead doors are on the back is... Let you do something with it, so it's good. Mr. Chairman, I'm through.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
So what's the current use of the property?
It's a vacant property right now.
So would the owner lease all of the, all 20 units, or would he use any of them himself?
Yeah, it would be, we wouldn't use any of them ourselves. So initially, the idea would be to lease them, but, you know, in theory, they could be leased or, you know, or sold as condos. But we don't have a use for them ourselves, other than, you know, maybe in the middle section, some of the office space, possibly. But, yeah.
Have you done anything like this before?
No, I'm actually a commercial real estate broker, so...
The owner, I'm sorry. Has the owner done anything like this before?
No, I'm saying, I'm going to be one of the owners, myself and my father, but I'm also a commercial real estate broker, been a commercial real estate agent for, you know, around 10 years. And I've worked in, you know, in the Marlborough area. So, not on the owner's side, but of, you know, I've worked in the industry.
Right. But you guys haven't, like, done this type of...
Yeah, I actually just finished up a, in Acton, a self-storage facility, about 38,000 square feet. Plus, we're doing 22,000 square feet of exterior buildings similar to this, but they're smaller units and they are for storage. So we don't even put electricity in them on the outside. On the inside, it's all climate control.
Are you leasing those, or...
Yep.
So how did, like, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of, as far as managing the property after this is done, you know, would you be on-site, and how would that work?
You don't necessarily have to be. We, on that facility, we... We, on, on that facility, we got fifty-eight thousand square feet, so we have an onsite manager that runs it. So, that's why we have the offices in the center. So, we probably, at some point, I would think we'd take an office in the center part. But would it need to necessarily be manned? Not necessarily, it's just needs to be, somebody needs to be on top of the, making sure everybody's taking care of everybody.
Yeah, so you, you have some experience with doing that? Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, with a, with a site this size, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think you'd have to have, you know, somebody onsite, because it's, in this application here, it's not your classic self-storage, you know? So, it's, you know, you're leasing it to, to operators and, you know, you'd, you'd obviously want it to be running smoothly just from an ownership standpoint and making sure that, you know, especially if you end up with twenty tenants, that, you know, one guy's not, you know, irritating the other nineteen, because that's just not good for business.
So, that feeds into my next question, which is, do you, you know, what, on what basis would you say that the, the plan with the dumpsters is adequate for contractor waste? Because if you have twenty units with contractors in there making cabinets and whatever else they're going to be doing with it, I would think that's going to generate substantial amount of waste.
Yeah, well, in saying that it's contractor bays, you know, light manufacturing, storage, I mean, in theory, it could be somebody, you know, who has antique cars, which is not an unusual type of situation where, you know, they don't have enough room to store it at home. So, they rent a bay and store some cars in there. It's probably not going to be twenty actual contractors there. And it wouldn't be, I'm not anticipating having twen, even if it was twenty contractors, like, if you had a painter, you had a plumber, it's, you know, eleven hundred, you know, a little over eleven hundred square feet, that's, you know, not something where they're going to be sitting there operating all day. It probably more likely is, you know, they're going to be coming and going. You know, I mean, like Mark had mentioned, in theory, you could have somebody making cabinets there, but I, I wouldn't necessarily anticipate having, having twenty of those.
I noticed in our packet, there's a, a sign, this looks like a pretty, fairly substantial sign. Have you reviewed, reviewed the signed bylaw in our code? And so, you're familiar with the requirements for that?
Yeah, well, I had dealt with, with Was Arthur, so, you know, they had just given me, you know, that as a, as a conceptual. But, yeah, they would, they would, you know, review the, the bylaws and make sure, you know, he, he had, he had already looked at it. I, I dealt with Tony over there. But, you know, he would make sure that that, you know, met those requirements.
Okay, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mrs. Littrell.
The building in Acton, you said it's similar looking to this one that's proposed?
We do have a couple of different buildings on the outside that are similar. We have, I have a forty-foot building that has, if, if you look at it, on the front side of it, it's eight feet high. And on the back side, it's twelve feet with the big overhead doors on the back. So, we do have some, but most of the buildings are much smaller, narrower, and they're just, they're garage doors. So, it is a, it's typically bays that are ten by twenty. So, they're much smaller bays, so they're only two hundred square foot bays.
Okay, where in Acton is that?
That's on Main Street, it's actually Post Office Square, right off of the, you know where the post office is in Acton?
Yeah.
That's actually, if you're going up Post Office Square Road, the, the post office is on the right, but it's the first building on the left. And I still have about eleven thousand square feet of units left to put up over there.
Okay. My other comment is landscaping, I look for native, these are pretty good, but there are some China and Japan natives in there. That's all I have.
What was that about the landscaping?
I look for native species, we encourage that in our landscaping bylaw. And I went through, most of them are natives, but there were some species from, that were from Japan, native to Japan, or China, or Korea, which isn't.
Is it, like, see, I, I didn't really go through that with him. I, I just, you know, asked him, he was the same person that designed it the last time it got approved. I mean, that's going to change a little bit anyways, because he put landscaping all across the front of the building. But if you look at, you know, he had them going right in front of the front door.
Which is not practical.
Yes, exactly, you know, because we're, so that, that's going to be tweaked, and I don't have a particular preference. I don't know why he would have, why he didn't do them all self, you know, all native. And I don't know if, if that's difficult to do it all or not. But, I mean, that's easy enough for me to ask him to change that, unless there's some reason he did it that way. So, trying to say, I didn't, I didn't ask him, he just kind of took a pass at it. So, I can always check with him and see if there's a particular reason why he picked those ones.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
I have a couple of questions, who, who owns the land right now?
It's, it's, it's an LLC called New Yankee, but essentially, it's a gentleman named Marcelo Malagni.
And where, where are they out of?
Marlboro.
And that's the four point six acres?
Yeah, yeah, the whole site.
And do you know how long they've owned the property?
I don't know exactly. Probably sometime, I think they ended up, yeah, I don't, it's probably sometime after, you know, the, the two thousand and ten or whenever it got approved.
So, how are you connected to the owner? How is, how is this little group here connected?
Well, we have the property under agreement.
So, the, the property, current property owner has had it for sale?
Yep.
And you're planning to buy it?
Yes, contingent on approvals.
And if you are able to get approvals, you'll buy it and you'll build this?
That's the plan.
Have you talked to the DPW, have you shown this to the South Pro DPW at all?
No, not myself.
I was on the planning board back when the, that other project was approved, and it was very, there was some great concerns, especially in the way the site wasn't managed or mismanaged. Even maybe twenty years before that, the site across the street, they went in and they cut down all the street trees. There's a rock ledge there with some not very substantial trees that were planted probably twenty years ago. And the streetscape has, has never recovered. And they wound up, that developer wound up paying tens of thousands of dollars in, it wasn't really a fine, but it was in, in exchange for illegally cutting down the street trees. So, sure enough, the previous project proponents came in and again, cut down all the trees, including some mature street trees. So, one side of the road got moonscape twenty-something years ago. And ten years ago, the other side of the road got moonscape. And needless to say, this board and others in the town were pretty upset. This is the main road to, that connects North Pro and South Pro. It's traveled heavily by the students at Algonquin and, and their parents for school and athletic events and all kinds of things. So, it was important to us in South Pro to make sure that the, the street that connected our town to their town and our school not look like an industrial park. And there was no reason in the world why it, it had to be moonscape, but it was. So, you can see that some of the trees have started to make a comeback on this four point six acres. And that's why I suggest that you're going to need to discuss this with the DPW. The street at that curve is exceptionally wide. And at the time, we had discussions with the DPW about possibly narrowing that street, because the width of the road invites speed. And felt that there was a way to make the road a little bit narrower, make the street drainage work a little bit better, and again, enhance the, the look of the road with a little bit more green and a lot less tar. So, I'd encourage you to take a look at where the right of way ends and where your property line is. And then, if you need to have the street, the actual pavement touching your property line, or if you're able to have some green space between your property line and the pavement, and maybe have a discussion with the DPW about that. I know we will, because this is another opportunity to narrow that road. I'm not sure if you're also aware that a few, several years ago, there was a terrible car accident there. And two sisters were killed in, in, right in, in front of your property. You can, you know that it has the, the marker there. And the, the discussion between then and now with some others, and, and even when the other project was proposed, there was concern about the, the distance between the pavement and the proposed building. Now, you mentioned several times the, the approved project, the previously approved project. Are you able to, it, it just, from my memory, looking at what you're proposing here, it appears that the front of your proposed building is further back from the road than what was previously approved. Do you know that?
If I'm remembering correctly, it's actually the same setback to the front property lines.
We'll check that, because when I'm looking at, on these plans, it looks like you have a guardrail? You're proposing a guardrail?
No. Along the back, yeah, because we have a one-to-one riprap slope.
So, I'm looking on sheet without a number. Grading plan. Looks like a guardrail to me, even though it goes right across your.
Oh, no, that, so, that's an infiltration trench for drainage purposes, for the walkway in the front.
Right here. All the way down, looks like a guardrail.
Oh, that's, that might, I can't see it from here, but that might be the existing gas line in the street. It's right on the edge of the pavement.
Oh, okay, those are little Gs.
Yeah, that's the gas line.
And then?
And that's the infiltration trench for the sidewalk in front of the buildings?
Not a stone wall.
Correct, not a stone wall.
So, you're saying that the, the distance between the front of the building and the pavement is the same as what was previously approved?
I'll check on that, we might have pushed it back a couple of feet, but I believe it's very similar to what was previously approved.
And then, you have planters, or are those planting beds in front of each unit?
That's just green space that would be planted.
So, if the snowplow goes by on a snowy, slushy day, and they spray snow off the street, is it going to wind up hitting your building?
I don't believe so, the building, we're, we're maintaining a fifteen-foot setback and just looking at the plan on the screen, we're greater than that fifteen feet away from the edge of the road, even to the property line.
Yeah, the scale on this drawing that I'm looking at, it looks, seems to scale off at over. Some of it's twenty-five feet, Bill. If you look at the scale, it shows almost fifty feet from the front of the building, maybe even sixty feet, between the front of the building and that gas line. Something's wrong. That's okay, you'll go back, I know you'll go back and look at it. I think some of the consistent comments that you got from us tonight was, and I, and I firmly believe that you'll have a hard time getting this plan through without more storage for, for, for the snow, more accessibility or more availability for, for the dumpsters. Have you talked to the railroad?
We have not had discussions with them yet.
So, you have the guardrail across the back. What's to keep the snow guy from just plowing it over the guardrail onto the, the railroad's property?
Well, in theory, we can't stop them if they do that during a storm, but I'm sure Joel wouldn't be too happy if they pushed down his guardrail when they're pushing snow off the back. So, I would say that, that's something that you would have to be on top of to make sure that they don't do that, whoever you hire. I'm not sure what the exact, exact distance is from the tracks.
The concern isn't that much about the tracks, it's the concern about the railroad's property. People tend to throw all their junk onto the, out the back, and it winds up never getting cleaned up, because the railroad never comes along and cleans up along the side. And you wind up with a big mess out in the back that you put there, or your tenants put there. And once it's there, then nobody admits that it's theirs. And we wind up with, you know, coffee cups, Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, we wind up with broken pieces of wood, all kinds of trash that needs to be policed. And it is, it's a steep drop-off that invites dumping. You may consider losing a unit for a snow storage or your dumpster use, or somehow configuring it a little bit differently. Because I think, I think, again, referring back to the other plan and this number of units and their proposed use, your, two dumpsters doesn't appear to be anywhere near adequate. And your area for the snow storage, if I was plowing that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even think about putting the snow there, other than from those little side entrances. And you're talking about a huge area of parking spaces and up against the buildings. That's a lot of snow to put in those little areas. So, we have to make sure that that's properly designed and managed. When you go out the front door, do you go out the front door?
You can.
What, once you go out the door, is there a walkway there?
Well, that's what I was saying, that the landscape plan was actually not correct, because he has trees going across the whole front. And what there will actually be is a, is a, you know, a main walkway going out from the front door to the street. And then, you know, you've got two sidewalks on the side. The way it's designed right now, it's just windows across the front, because, you know, you're at a separate grade out front than out back. But if somebody wanted office space up front, you'd have to put a little office mezzanine, and you could put in a door where the windows are now. So, that's, again, depending on how the unit gets used. If it's somebody just using it as storage and they don't put in the office up front, then, you know, it could just be a window.
Well, I'm mainly concerned, I'm not concerned about the windows, it's the, it's the front door. Does that invite somebody to park on the street and try to get in that way, as opposed to going around back? Just a question, you can think about it. If there's no front door, just a window there, then, and you, if you can manage it that way, or?
Yeah, the only, the only.
Architecturally, it probably looks better with a door.
Yeah, well, there's, there's that part of it, and then the other thought that I had is, if, if there was ever a situation where somebody wanted a, the first space you walk into to be the office space, then you would, you'd have that on the front of the building and all the parking's out back. So, you'd kind of need that front door so somebody could park out back, and then, just point it out here.
That's okay, too much detail, I, I just threw it out there. That's okay. Too much detail. I, I just threw it out there. Mr. Jenks reminded, you would need entrance from this side of the building for fire protection. I guess one last question. You're proposing, is, is this a metal building? Standing seam metal?
Yeah.
Correct.
And then, what is that, brick, a brick along the bottom?
Brick or stone, just the, on the front there.
Right. This board doesn't have the authority to dictate the architectural appearance of the building. But, I think the board would be interested in knowing what the colors were, and, and, you know, a colored rendering.
Yeah, we were, we were, you know, we're planning on having that for the, for the meeting, like a 3D, you know, color rendering, and it's, it's most likely gonna, you know, probably what we're going with is like a gray, a gray with like a black roof, and then, stone out front.
Your design?
Yeah.
Anything else? Karina, you good? Anyone else on the public? Tim?
I'll, I'll ask a couple of random questions, just because I do this. Are you heating with gas, or oil?
I think, is that gas in the street?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is, is that if it's oil, then you have oil storage. And if that's going to be outside the building, someone's gonna ask about it. If you, if you're doing air conditioning, cooling towers, are they on the building, or do they occupy space on the site? And the third thing that came to mind is, if you have light manufacturing, or even office space these days, people tend to go for emergency power, and that would be something else that you'd have to cite, and I think the board might care about. So those are my three.
All good questions.
I don't think that we plan to do a generator on-site. You know, that's, I guess, being a small units like that, you'd need a pretty good-sized generator to run that whole thing, so we probably won't have. As far as air conditioning, yes, there's a very good chance that we, we, we could wind up having some air conditioning units if that came down to it. And as far as heating, natural gas would be the way to go, but I'm not positive if it's there. But, if not, we probably would not go with oil, we'd probably go with propane.
Either way, there's tanks outside.
Correct, yep.
If there's nothing else, I think you probably got a little bit of a feedback from the board. We got some information from you all, and maybe we'll see you in the future. We thank you for your time. Okay, thank you. We're just checking on something. And, it'll only take a minute. The, the next item on the agenda is special town meeting warrant articles. With the board's permission, we can bounce to the, do that one afterwards, but do the next discussion item, which is Hidden Meadows subdivision, release of lots two and four. Is that okay? I'll ask the town planner to give us the desired outcome for this agenda item.
As you may recall, recently, Rebecca Franks, who is the owner of lot two, was before us for a modification to subdivision. And her lot was approved to be divided to lot number two. The, the intent is that you're going to be selling that lot at some time in the near future. So, the attorney requested some kind of evidence that the lot was released from subdivision. So I went through the files, and I looked, and we found a surety agreement from 1989. Wait, I gotta catch my breath, I'm running. And it was, in addition, in addition to the surety agreement, it released lots two and four, signed off by the planning board at the time. The original document, we couldn't find in the file anymore. The town clerk searched, I searched, we had a scanned copy of it. So, the easiest way to do it was to come back before the board and request for a vote to release the lot, so that it could be documented officially, and then, this could be recorded, and then it would be on the record. Lots one, three, and five had already previously been released. So, Ms. Franks is here this evening in order to get the planning board to vote to approve to release lots two specifically. And I included lot four, so that it would close out the release of the lots for that subdivision. And we would have record in order.
Karina and I discussed this a couple of days ago. And I, I suggested, we had done this in the past, where if there's no record that can be found of a lot released, then we just create a new, fresh document to release the lot. And the current planning board could release the lot, even though the lot was released decades, in this case, decades ago. So that's what we're being asked to do tonight. Any questions, Mr. Jenks?
I take it this is because Marshall looked for a release on record and couldn't find it, or...
Sorry, oh, is it working? Rebecca Franks?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, sorry, Rebecca Franks for Hidden Meadow. Actually, a different land lawyer was looking through our title agreement. I was making sure that that was clean, and went into Massachusetts Records, looking for the releases specifically on the covenant, and only found one, three, and five was recorded officially. And two and four, the way it was, anyway, it wasn't. And then, that's when we contacted Karina to see if, for some reason, it was in the files that none of us saw, and needed to get it recorded. So, we're trying to just, going back and making sure everything is cleaned up on my specific lot. And lot number four happens to be on the same document, so I might as well just do both. And that neighbor will thank me when they go to, because I think they're an original owner, so it hasn't been noticed that it's missing.
Do we know, is there any reason not to release these? Would they have been purposely not released, or...
No, and...
They're not even on file.
It's, this Form J safety, a surety agreement, lot release, is a document that we have an electronic file of, which specifically said the town hereby releases lot two and four, which was signed by the planning board at the time. But it wasn't, doesn't appear to have been recorded.
Okay, yeah. I'm, I'm fine with this.
Mr. Stein?
I have no questions.
Mrs. Latrell?
No questions.
Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we execute the, the document, releasing lots two and four from the covenant for Hidden Meadows subdivision.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. We, we have to come back to sign that in the presence of a notary.
I ran down to check, and town clerk was already gone for the evening. He was here earlier, so I realized, oh.
So during the daytime, over the next couple of days, we'll come in and sign it, and then the town clerk, or if there's another notary in the building. Beth, yeah. Okay, all set, Rebecca?
And then I'll get it recorded for you. It will be in file.
And Chris sitting through everything for...
That's okay. Thanks.
Thank you. You want to do special town meeting warrant article discussion? Karina?
This is on the agenda this evening as a, just a discussion item. I just want to make sure that planning board members are aware that there were two citizens petitions for bylaw changes to Section 174-25A regarding zoning board quorums, and the number of zoning board of appeal members. And then, 174-24B, which were some other requirements related to that same issue. And then there was a, the, at the annual town meeting, there was Article 32 regarding removing of Section 174-10G, the appeal for major site plan approval to zoning board. So those have been posted in the newspaper for public hearings as of today and next Monday, and are scheduled for public hearings on May 14th, which will put us in time for the special town meeting, which is scheduled for May 22nd. So, just so you know, these are in the works for public hearings now. So I have this on, in case there was any general discussions regarding those warrant articles, and the special town meeting, and how they proceed with that.
Thank you. The email that you sent out, the first one had the wrong date for the public hearing, but the other three, the next one corrected it, and they all have May 14th as the correct date.
Yes, this morning, or late morning, early afternoon. I, as required, I have to distribute the information to the town department heads. So I put together an email for each one, and the first one I sent out had the wrong public hearing date on there. So I rescinded that one, and put the three other emails out to all the department heads with the correct information. Like distributing plans, if we get a site plan approval, same kind of deal. Sorry about that.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Jenks?
You taking these in any order, or do you, Karina, do you...
For this evening, or for...
Yeah, yeah, for this.
Well, I've been trying to keep the order, just so it's not confusing. The first citizens petition is 174-25A.
This one?
Yes.
Okay. This seems to re, to require a town meeting approval, if I'm reading the right one, of regulations, rules and regulations adopted by the zoning board. And I have to tell you, I'm very much opposed to that. I don't think rules and regulations are the subject of town meeting. They're, they're based on past history with zoning issues. I could very easily see town meeting getting into debate about whether we use Roman numerals in this regulation, or, and not in another, or which should we do? These are the kinds of details that need to be left up to the individual boards. I see no reason to require town meeting approval of one board's rules and regulations. If we're gonna do it, let's do them all. But, please don't. So that's, that's my only comment on that, I guess. And the, the, I think the wording needs to be cleared up on 174-25B. And I haven't gone through and, and done it, but it seems to me very confusing. I, I think the idea's fine. It's just hard, hard reading. That's just my comment. I, I might, I might just point out that I'm sure each of these have several other pages of signatures, and regardless of whether I'm speaking against or for either one, I may have signed one or both of these for the purpose of getting it before the town, which I typically would do with a citizens petition to, just to give it its fair shake. So I don't know if I've signed one of these or not, but if anyone's looking, don't take that as an indication of, of approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
I'm not really ready to render any opinions on, on these warrant articles at this point. Given that we are gonna have a public hearing in two weeks, and we may or may not meet as a board just prior to special town meeting, I think there's still plenty of time to have those discussions, and we don't need to get too deep on this tonight. That's just my opinion. Thanks.
Mrs. Latrell?
I'd just like to point out on 174-10G, on the appeal to the zoning board of appeals, there was a question raised at town meeting, whether having this line in here, court of competent jurisdiction in accordance with Mass. General Laws 48, Section 17, whether that was taking the right of appeal away from someone. And I think that question has been answered by Aldo, that this is the only avenue for zoning, and that he had mentioned a writ of something that I can't pronounce that begins with C, and it...
Sure, sure.
Yeah, which, it looks like that's an appeal after it's gone through a lower court to... the Supreme Court, I think. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be applicable here. This is not taking any rights. So I think that, that question that was raised has been answered. And also, I think that, did the board of selectmen ask if we wanted to co-sponsor that article with them?
Yes. They did.
So, that was gonna be part of the discussion tonight on this one, the one seventy-four ten G. Does, it was an email from the town administrator asking if we wanted to co-sponsor it. So through the town planner, I said that I didn't have the authority to, to do that. So we'd bring it up at an open public me, meeting tonight and see, see what the board wants to do. I, personally, I don't, I don't have a problem having the planning board co-sponsor it as long as co-sponsoring and I don't, maybe this is a reflection of things that have happened in the past where, where we're asked to co-sponsor something and then we wind up doing all the presentation and all the defending and all the presentation. So a, a co-sponsoring, I think in my eyes for this article would be to have a selectman speak to it, town council speak to it, and then a planning board member speak to it. Mr. Jenks?
First, I, I didn't comment on this because I thought we were talking only about the citizens petitions. And this, I think we should make clear for the standing audience here, everybody couldn't get a seat, that this is essentially the article that was amended and then defeated at the town meeting just passed. Essentially, the way the zoning code reads now, if anybody is aggrieved by action of the planning board, this board, on site plan review only, they are instructed to appeal that to the zoning board. And then that action by the zoning board can be further appealed to court. Presumably, if, if that would happen by the, the loser at the zoning board. This article now set, now takes the zoning board out of the picture and would say anyone aggrieved by an action of the planning board on site plan review would go right to court if they wanted to appeal it. And skip the zoning board. So, in thinking about this article, it, it seems to me if, if this article is defeated as it was at town meeting, somehow we need to require that the zoning board write rules and regulations for the conduct of a, of an appeal. I, I think we heard Chairman Dennington explain that at one point the zoning board didn't really understand what they were to do in an appeal, whether they were just to look at the procedure that this board, the planning board, used and try to determine if there was anything egregious in that process or whether they were to do a deep dive into the site plan review itself and essentially redo the site plan. And, and the reason I'm sure that they were confused about that is because they've never, never written any regulations or procedures for their own use. And that, I think, was explained by the fact that they've only done this twice. But, but if we're going to continue, yeah, thank you. Only once because the two were filed, but one was settled before it, it went to the appeal. So, I, I think my concern is that if they're going to continue to do them, they've, they've got to have a procedure and know, and know how to, to, how to do the appeal. If, if this article is approved, in my mind, it raises a different concern and that is I'm concerned that the planning board has to have assurance that if one of our site plan reviews is appealed in, would be either the land court or the superior court, we've got to know that we're going to have counsel to defend it. And that may just be a matter of sitting down with the selectmen and getting them to agree that that's important. Or, or maybe it's something more formal than that. But, but that would be my concern with passing this the way it's written, so.
So, in terms of the legal representation, there would, there would be no reason why town council, at least that I can perceive, sitting here right now, would be conflicted out of representing us in that scenario. Because it wouldn't be another board. It would be an aggrieved party. Essentially, taking action against the town, us, in an outside court. So, I'm not so sure that an amendment, I think that that's a fair thing to raise with town council before, if possible beforehand, and maybe even at the town meeting itself. But, you know, based on the history of, with this process, with this bylaw, I would recommend not amending it any further. Keeping it as simple as possible might be the best course of action.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Stein. The, if there's appeal under a special permit that we issue or a subdivision that we issue, it would, it would be the same process as this if this was approved. And as Mr. Stein said, if, if it's someone appealing this one board, then we would be, the town would be represented by town council. I don't know how he could deny that.
There is a, I, I agree with Mr. Stein. Keep it simple. And, but I also agree that with Mr. Jenks that this needs to be addressed before, even, as soon as possible, even before the public hearing, so that if we're able to get guidance from the selectman's office and town council as to how to proceed in, in his concern, if that's spelled out and agreeable to the, the parties, then we could share that at the public hearing and at the town meeting. There is a scenario though, I think, it certainly wouldn't be with this planning board, but let's say a future planning board, far less qualified and probably not as good thinking, may approve or approve a site plan with some really crazy condition. You know, maybe fifty acres for snow storage for a one acre project or, you know, porta-johns for a thousand people, just in case there's a, a great interest in, something like that. And it was appealed. And the selectmen would, the selectman, we get appealed, we, we go to the selectmen and say, we need a lawyer to handle our appeal. Selectmen look at the matter and they say, you people are crazy. We can't, we can't defend this. This is, we don't agree with it. We don't agree with, with what you, what you ruled on. But we'll talk to town council. They speak to town council and town council says that, those planning board people are crazy, that this is, we can't defend this. Selectmen would say, you're on your own. We're not, we're not spending any taxpayers' money on a lawyer to defend this crazy action that you did. So once again, the actions of the planning board would be subject to review by the selectman and again, possibly leave the planning board flapping in the wind without a lawyer.
Except that it's not the planning board that's, the actions being taken against in that scenario, it's the town. I, I still say it's so, I, my brain can't inherently understand in that situation, how the town could inherently not send town council to administer the, the process. Regardless of how quote unquote, wrong the planning board would be under those circumstances, it's still something that would, that the paperwork would end up being sent to town council by the court in the first place, most likely. So, I'm just not sure that town council could avoid that role in, in any scenario.
So that's the type of discussion that we should probably have with the town administrator, one or two of the selectmen and town council. So we can get guidance on this discussion and get some, you know, guidances to, yeah, you're right, it's, it's still an open item. Or no, it's not. We're, we're compelled to provide the planning board with counsel because it's, the town is being sued. So I guess what we could do is, I'm willing to do this, but I'm also willing to let others suggest that we have the town planner talk to the town administrator over this and see if one or two of the selectmen and town council are willing to meet with one or two of the planning board, to go, planning board members to go over this as an administrative matter that would help us with this article.
Sorry to belabor this, but are we, we talking about something other than an amendment in terms of how we would verify that legal representation would be provided? I mean, I guess I'm trying to get a sense of what you guys are envisioning.
A letter or a, a, some type of reference to a, a right rule, a regulation or, or a, a new letter from the selectman that would, or from town council that would say, this is how I would advise the selectmen to proceed in, in such a scenario or scenarios. Any more on these warrant articles? Next item?
Quick, did you want town council involved in that?
Yeah.
Same meeting, right?
Yep. Open space? Inspection program monitoring form template. The long-awaited open space inspection program template. Open space monitoring report. One page, front and back. One sheet, two pages. And this would be filled out by either a consultant or an official of the town?
That's correct. So, we had some encumbered funds last year that we wanted to utilize for some open space inspections. So we came up with a plan to create an open space monitoring form, simple to start with. One page with enough information that town staff or a hired consultant could go onsite to an open space parcel or parcels in a subdivision and check the status and check it against what was approved, if there's been any encroachments. Anything like that. If it's a natural disturbance, if it's a man-made disturbance, or if it's all in order and compliance. And have some kind of a simple baseline report that could maybe be reviewed like on a twenty-five percent open space parcels every year, get reviewed over a four-year program so that eventually after, after four years, you just start again and you keep seeing what's happening with the open space, which is very important to the people in Southborough. So what we did is we had a couple meetings with Mass Autobahn, who's contracted to help out with this service. And we developed a form and we picked a handful of locations that we want to now, once we have any feedback or changes to the forms based on your comments. And this was also forwarded to open space preservation and to conservation for comment. So I'm waiting to hear back from them, but because it's a pilot program right now and we're just doing a sampling, we're probably pretty close with this template so that Mass Autobahn can go out and actually do some inspections now that the weather's good. And then report back in the June meeting, a, a June planning board meeting prior to the end of the fiscal year so that we can close out that contract. So we've also, we've already done quite a bit of work on this, but now we wanna close it out by seeing if these forms are useful, which I think they will be, but actual field will, will help tweak anything on these.
So this form, we have it on, in paper form here, but the intent would be to either put this on a clipboard and they handwrite it, or it would be like in a tablet that they would take out to the field and just fill it out and, and take the pictures and, and have those somehow attached electronically.
Yeah, and you can append additional pages, but basically you're putting in who's doing the inspecting, identify the property, what were the open space requirements? You can see up there. Then they look and see the actual site conditions under the third topic here. And then while they're out there, they, if you flip the page over, you might, they might take a few pictures and insert them in a couple pages add-on. And then the approved plan of land, which it designates the open space areas, would be here for reference as well. Very small, but nonetheless, you could kinda get a good idea. And just to also add, this taps into the deed research program that was completed over the prior years because the summaries that were put together there are very useful in setting up these forms before you go out to do the field inspection.
Yeah, so box one and two could be done in the office. Actually, probably have to be done in the office to look, look into the record to see how, how each of these things are numbered and.
That's right, and you'd load the plan in the back already as well. You might have a separate eleven by seventeen you'd take with you. But ultimately, you'd, you'd cut and paste that plan into here as a quick reference.
Any questions? Comments? Mr. Jenks?
I, I certainly applaud the attempt to keep this on one sheet of paper. It seems to me that missing, however, is a place to put notes. And this is the kind of report, I think, that just lends itself to comments and notes clarifying and, and you've got, for instance, site conditions, you've got checkoff boxes for, it looks like twelve different categories. And if you picked one like tree cutting, I think, I think that needs more than just a checkbox. Yes, there were, a checkbox, yes, there were, there were tree cuttings, evidence of tree cuttings. It needs some notes talking about how many, what area. So, I would suggest, I hate to, but I would suggest another sheet of paper that could be used, wouldn't have to, but could be used for notes, for field notes. But I've looked this over, I like it. I think you've got all the categories covered.
We do have one little line at the bottom for notes. So, I, I know what you're saying.
And you can write in the margins, of course.
Mr. Stein.
Yeah, just to echo Mr. Jenks's comment, I, the first thing and the only thing that left out of me was the lack of room for comments. There's, these situations can be complex and with lots of details. And I would highly recommend expanding the opportunity for the inspector to comment as they see fit.
Mrs. Luttrell.
I echo again. But this is great that we're working on this. It's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So, maybe within each, like, box three could be an expandable box. So, if you had comments, it would just push the rest of it into a second or third page.
And it may be like that.
But you're right, Phil, tree cutting, is it one tree or is it 100?
You can say that type of thing about any one of those.
Yeah.
It may be there's a situation where you don't need notes, which is why I thought if you had a separate notes page, you could either use it or not.
We could also add, like, attach note as necessary, like a line here, "Attach," and say, "See page for notes." And then if you wanted to, you could.
Do you want to form a subcommittee on this note box? No? Any other questions or comments on this? Yes, ma'am.
Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. Sorry, I'm getting here late. I was at stewardship committee. Our commission hasn't met to take a look at this, so I'm sorry. It's actually the first time I've seen it because somehow it didn't come through in my email because I've had problems, so. Are you finalizing this tonight?
No.
So, if we meet, we can give you some input because we might have some comments. But I'd like to say thank you. This looks like a great progress or, you know, a new step or phase you're moving into. And I think it looks like a great idea to be moving in this direction.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All set? Karina with this?
Well, just so you know, the plan is that we'll make a couple of small adjustments. We get some feedback from Open Space Preservation Committee, Commission. And then I'd like to engage Mass Autobahn to just try a sampling, to go out in the field and see what they think. I found some statute about the right to access the property, contacting the people and saying, "We're just coming to observe." So, I think we're okay there. And then, you know, it's kind of pilot program again, so we can always see what doesn't work and we'll fix it. So, once that happens, at the next, at some final meeting in June, Mass Autobahn will come in and present their findings of the five sample locations. So, you can expect that, that'll be coming up.
Very good. Is the next item on the agenda, the planner's report?
Okay. Just quickly, one thing, Jessie had mentioned the potential for a meeting prior to the special town meeting on the 22nd. And we can, you could probably decide that at the May 14th meeting, or did you want to figure that out tonight?
We should post an agenda.
Post an agenda?
You know, the basic agenda item would be to discuss the special town meeting warrant articles.
Okay.
But if an A and R comes in, we could add that on there and give, give good service to the, to the public on that.
As you're aware, Chestnut Hill Road, the alterations related to the subdivision went through Board of Selectmen recently, and they approved that with some conditions. And in your packet, I left you a copy of that road alteration plans and their approval and what they had submitted. Some update on, yeah?
Would they have to come before the planning board and the tree warden for a hearing if they're removing any trees there? It's a scenic road.
If it's, if it's for a public roadway, they might have to. I'll have to double-check that because there's one or the other. For example, there's one scenario where they don't have to, and I just have to get my, I have to wrap my arms around that and understand that better.
I think if they're doing road maintenance or widening or things on the road, they do. If they're not, then it's supposed to be a hearing just before the tree warden to take down.
Otherwise, it's before the planning board for scenic road.
Yeah, if they're doing work on the road.
Tree removal or stone wall. All right. There was some updated information on the public safety complex and the construction bids that came in. And there was a lot of, the prices came in good, so there was a decent contingency amount. Some of the things they dropped, I believe, were the solar panels on the canopies, stuff like that. So, there's been some interesting articles on, on public safety buildings' progress. So, that's moving along. And just to point out, in your packet, I included, there is a Southborough Public Safety Complex groundbreaking event taking place tomorrow at 4:00 PM. That's Tuesday, May 1st, 4:00 PM at the Southborough Golf Club, 32 Corderville Road. And I may have a, I don't think I copied it here. Anyway, it's, I believe, it may be on the town website, but it's been forwarded to lots of people, just so everybody knows, tomorrow afternoon. And then one other thing I wanted to point out, we got a legal notice from the Town of Westboro regarding a special permit hearing for proposals within a senior living overlay district. I don't know if you recall, but back in the fall, I mentioned there was a project to construct 700 independent senior housing units located within 14 buildings, along with a proposed clubhouse, utility, stormwater, management facility, landscaping. So, that's a big project that's happening in Westboro at Zero Lyman Street, just for your information. Pretty big program. I think that's near, yeah. Just so you know. And that's what I have for planner's report this evening. I don't have any updated meeting minutes, but I'd like to point out that Joyce.
Joyce.
One of the seniors in town who works with Vanessa Hale is helping me out a couple of days a week. And she's recently been a little bit indisposed, but she's doing the meeting minutes at home and sending me the drafts so that we can catch up on those. So, we'll be getting those in order.
She was here earlier tonight. She sat over there.
Mcnouskis, Joyce Mcnouskis. She's been a tremendous help so far, and she's taken that on to help me as well. And we have interviews on Thursday for business admin position.
That is the segue into my part of the planner's report. Karina and I have been talking about the budget. This is, it's that time of the year. And we have in front of us the latest control report from Heidi. And it's also, it seems like almost every year, we either have a vacancy in the town planner position or in the admin position. So, those salary items wind up not being fully expended, which then allows us to, or essentially requires us to find a suitable home for those funds. And normally, it's in the form of consulting for areas beyond our expertise on the board or within the planning department. And since the planning department, since January, has consisted of just a town planner, even though she has tremendous expertise, she's been wearing the two hats. And so, this is that time of the year where we would identify areas where we could have a consultant come in and help us in areas that would either, where we're deficient, where the timing requires some action, or where we're able to address areas that we normally never would. So, I believe there's been several references and discussions regarding the 2008 master plan, which requires updating every 10 years. What's that? So, over the last, you know, we were all involved to some extent in that 2008 master plan. And if I remember right, it was extremely, extremely thorough and very well organized and very well accepted. So, and in the 10 years since it's, it's come out, I, the references to it seem to still be valid, where, you know, prior to the 2008 master plan, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion about mixed use. This master plan talks about that, and we continue to hear about that. And there's other areas. So, it would seem to me that, and I certainly would be, you know, available for a completely opposite opinion, but it just seems to me that we don't need to go into as thorough or as an extensive review or rebuild of the master plan. Far less intense effort, I think, would be required to properly update it. So, again, looking at the budget, it, it's time, and there's also funds available here for the town planner, I think, to go out and discuss with possible consultants and get some ideas for an RFP that we would send out and ask a consultant to launch on the update of the master plan. So, this is the first baby step. And shame on us if we don't take advantage of these funds in this year's budget to work on that. There's other areas that we, that we need to address. So, this, whatever the entire amount, and, and Karina hasn't calculated the burn rate for these, for our annual budget, but we, we will calculate the burn rate and have an estimate, as we did last year and the year before and the year before that, for the type of funds that would be available to hire consultants. So, I'm just putting this out tonight. At our next meeting, I want to have this on the agenda also, with maybe some more details from the town planner in moving forward, but also have more details on other needs that the, that these funds could address. For example, continuing the program with Mass Autobahn on the open space. There's also another project that we're considering, and I'm not sure if anyone's ever done this. I've never heard of it, but I think it would be very valuable. We've been occasionally praised and sometimes questioned or criticized for things like site plan and mostly site plan, I guess. But I think it would be very helpful for us to know how other towns do it. So, to hire a consultant, and it wouldn't have to be a really high-tech consultant, but to have someone go to some signature towns in this area and in other parts of the state, maybe Cape Cod, maybe the Western Mass, and see how those towns handle site plan, see how long it takes them to do a site plan on average, and all the other elements associated with site plan, to see how the other towns are managing it. And then be able to compare tho, those results with how we do it. And there may be some areas from that limited research where we could learn how to do things better, or start doing things that we're not doing, or stop doing things that we, we are doing that the others don't think is a good idea. So, any questions or comments on, on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie again. The open space and recreation plan, which was due to be updated, we hired the Conway School, and they went so far, and there's some remaining work above the ability of the volunteers to do. And is this something, the last one we did and completed was actually done very well under the leadership of town player, planner Vera Colius. And I'm wondering if your board was open to it, if I put together what was left to be done and any potential costs that it would cost to do that, to present to you for your consideration, not your ex, not, without an expectation. But if there's no stomach for it, I don't want to, you know, work on that before your next meeting.
This is a recreation report?
No, it's the open space and recreation plan. It's a requirement, you don't have, the town doesn't have to have one, but without one, you do not get any state funding for recreation or open space grants, which we're hoping to be able to apply for, for trails and also for some reimbursement for a recent town purchase of land. And you have to have an updated open space and recreation plan.
It has to be both open space and recreation?
It's a, it's an open space and recreation plan, yes. There's strict requirements from the state of what goes into it. It's more of a open space plan at this point. It has some recreation components in it. And I believe those have pretty well been satisfied at this time. A lot of it is about identifying which parcels of land and who own, one of the sticking points is all the land in town has to be identified, if it's protected or not protected, if it's under the Conservation Commission's control or the town's control. Is it recreation, like a field or not? Those types of, a survey has to be done. We have to identify a five-year work plan for different departments that would participate in different partnerships, like the Open Space Commission working with the planning board on, blah, 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 and the Open Space Commission and the Conservation Commission working together. The, if I'd known this was a topic, I would have brought the last one we had, but I think Donnie would remember, Mimi remembers, that Vera Colius took the lead the last time. And this time, we did it with a working group. Were you on it as the planning board member or were you open space, Mimi? So, we had a small committee. We pretty well worked with the consultants from the Conway School, but it was the, if you go to like Mass Autobahn or other consultants, the price to get one done is, you know, $30,000 up. We paid $5,000 and we got, we got a good return for what we paid for.
Do you have a Plan B?
Do we have a Plan B? Burning the Midnight? Do we have a plan B? Um, Burning the Midnight?
Just let, let me explain. I, I'm far more interested in the open space piece of that than the recreation. Because the recreation seems to me to be a, a, it's a big open pit that you can fall into very easily. And just the fact that you mentioned that Vera had a big role in the last time. Somewhere in history, the town planner started getting involved in several different areas. And then when something happens, like one of your people leave, and all of a sudden, the town planner is very busy because he or she is always very busy. But now you've got, oh, well, uh, the planner worked on that recreation. But, you know, the, the planner should be doing the update. And we have a problem, I think. Uh, we've had it in the past of the town planner being spread very thin because of a lot of other activities. Open space, we have a tie to that. And that's why I, I, I would be more inclined to think that is good if it were just open space.
I would say that, to address some of those concerns, this last version was not under the, um, oversight of the town planner, although I think Jen did meet with us and gave input early on, um, Jennifer Burney. But she was, it was not on her, you know, it wasn't a, a big project for her. The, we did have a committee, um. What needs to be done now, I'm, think it would be more that same committee, not on the town planner, but where you were talking about maybe having some funds, and of course, you'd have to be as involved as you wished. But for us, just to give them the, it's more like there's final tasks. The bulk of the work has been done. But there are certain tasks that are required to be done, that they didn't do, and that we just don't have the expertise. It's conservation commissioner, um, not commissioner, but Betsy, um, Beth Rosenbloom, sorry. The conservation agent working with the open space commission. Doreen comes in, um. So I would think we would take just, what I would like to do is hire a consultant to just finish that work. We could have oversight of getting it done and report back to you, or have your input as much as you wish. Um, I, I'm not sure how much more money it would cost to get these tasks done. We have to prioritize some of the parcels. It's, a lot of it's about surveying all the parcels in town.
All the town-owned parcels.
And other, like D C R land has to be identified, and, you know, so it's a, creating a list, a survey.
I think as you stated earlier, you didn't aware that, you weren't aware that this was on the agenda, and it's not. Nor, uh, in my opinion, is our budget fully available to fund that, um, that item. Although I'm glad you spoke up because we'll keep it in mind. But I think long before we spend money, our budget on open space, we're going to, uh, spend it on our own programs, um, first. And once again, you, you correctly, uh, mentioned, uh, Vera doing a great job. I do remember the, uh, the school coming in, and I do remember Jen working on it. I think she was identified as the, uh, the point of contact or the contract manager, only because it's a full-time town employee and available for the consultants to easily, um, contact during the day or meet, meet with. So, uh, I just called on Phil. Uh, Jessie, any comments on that? Mimi?
So you're just looking for funds for a consultant?
To finish a plan that has to do with land use planning. Um, I think that's how it came under the planning board, um, last time. It's a plan. A lot of it has to do with not just what we have now, but future. Where would you, what land needs, should be looked at for various town needs, both recreation and open space, conservation, passive recreation. Um, so yeah, the, the consultant did, the Conway School did the mapping and a lot of that work. There's some survey work and some, um, parcel identification that's left to be done.
We're kind of going through the same thing. We're getting way off track here, but, uh, the town planner, uh, in the last probably six weeks has spent double-digit, if not triple-digit hours supporting, uh, affordable housing, which as far as I can remember, is not one of our programs at all. And yet, she has spent many, many hours in the last several weeks, uh, on that program. So we're, uh, we're hopefully after the election going to have a meeting with, uh, town administrator, and hopefully, uh, at some point, the selectmen, if it gets to that point. But we need to identify the roles and responsibility of the planning board and the planning department relative to public housing, relative to open space, and any other things that we're doing that are not officially our role or our responsibility. And yet, when things go wrong, it winds up being our fault. So we want to make sure that we have clarity on who's responsible to do what in these different programs. It's not a big deal. If, uh, if it's decided that the planning department will take on, uh, elements of the housing or all of it, or elements of open space or all of it, then we, we can adjust to that. And we will then be the Town of Selpro Planning, Open Space, and Housing Department with clearly defined roles and responsibilities. I guess that's it for that item, unless there's something else.
So I won't spend any time providing you with any information on what's needed for a plan?
Why don't we, um, let the town planner, uh, get up to speed on, on that? And then through her, she'll get back to you if we need that. But thank you for offering.
I'd love to just know about what I'm gonna, what it looks like.
Right, yeah. I can tell it's news to you. That's okay. Uh, okay, we talked about the minutes. The next meeting is May fourteenth. We are, we are going to post that, right? Oh, oh, that's right. Yeah, I'm thinking of the next one. Special town meeting. We'll post that one also.
I have one last question for tonight, and, um, the zoning map, does anybody, the, the current map that I see on the walls and that I have a copy of is April tenth, two thousand and six. And I was wondering if there were other districts added that should be mapped on there that we haven't? Or are those, um, bylaw additions more narrative and not specific to actually outlining something on the zoning map? And I ask because, um, the proponents for Chestnut Meadow are trying to close out some paperwork, and they need an tested zoning map, a town clerk, a tested zoning map. So I had sent the town clerk what I thought was the current one based on the zoning code and the maps. And he said to just give a quick check, because he knew we were meeting tonight, if there were any history to any of the changes since two thousand and six that should have been mapped.
The, uh, solar overlay, is that the one you're thinking of, Jessie, too?
But was it defined as with boundaries, or was it a, you know, a narrative type of description, like with the medical marijuana? You know, there wasn't a, uh, there, it's not a-
Certain parcels within the-
Industrial park.
Certain parcels within the industrial park and industrial district, um, it may have been narrative in nature. Now that you mention, I, I honestly can't remember off the top of my head. I wasn't ready for that.
I remember working with, uh, might have been Jenny or, or, um, Jothi. But, uh, I believe that they, those overlays were assigned to certain parcels in those districts.
That's right.
So they would have meets and bounds. They would, they would have, they're not, they're not restricted to the zoning dis- district. They're actual parcels.
So they could be identified just through assessors?
Yep.
Rather than modifying the zoning map? It's described in the bylaw that says parcel this and this and this, and you just go to those parcels and know it? As opposed to it may not show up on the map in the context of the scale?
It may be another item that, uh, after talking with the town clerk, uh, who's responsible for updating the zoning map? And if that's our responsibility, and we think it's, uh, appropriate to, uh, add that, uh, overlay district, then we would then have a two thousand and eighteen certified zoning map instead of a twelve-year-old map.
And he mentioned the adult entertainment bylaw. There was something between two thousand and six and now that may have been about that particular bylaw as well. There was this, and I can look through the bylaws and see if it's narrative or not. Um, I just wonder if you knew off the top of your head. Because right now, everybody is using that current zoning, that zoning map from two thousand and six. It's on the website. It's on the walls. So, and it can't be that far off if, if it's already-
The only overlay district that I'm aware of is the solar one.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, 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 if at all.
Okay. Thanks. I'll check that by just reading the bylaws too a little bit more specifically.
Well, wasn't there one for marijuana? Was it medical? We don't have, the town didn't accept recreational, but, but there was one for medical marijuana that-
I think those were done with dimensions. In other words, you'd say you'd have to be a thousand feet from the school, or five hundred feet from a school, or from a residential zone or something like that, as opposed to drawing it on the map? Because you'd have like little bits and-
I remember. That was just a, a couple of circles on Route nine.
Yeah, but I-
For recreational.
And it wasn't even one continuous, not a significant continuous area, so.
Then maybe, uh, maybe I asked the town planner to create, with great thanks to the D P W and their resources. They gave us that, uh, G I S layer that I guess when you drew those circles, which lots would be available within those circles or outside those circles? And then they color-coded those lots, but maybe that never got elevated to beyond internal looking.
Right.
I re, I remember we did that, and there were, because we had to make sure that the circles, uh, didn't result in zero lots.
That's right.
You were calling from the medical marijuana bylaw or the, uh, one for the last year's town meeting, the recreational?
Recreational was just banned in the town.
Yeah, so we don't have to, but it was a similar process. We went to the assessors, and we got the parcels and what's close by and all that. And there was only like four parcels or something like that. Yeah, so. And again, they, I'll have to check with other towns, too. It may be handled just narratively with, um, you know, like I said, a distance from a certain school, or, you know, a distance from schools or different types of uses. But something we have, something I have to look into. Okay. That's my last question.
Mr. Jenks.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, five to four to zero. We're adjourned.